My cohort is District 4, uh, 74 Part D. Uh, and my, uh, my cohort for this one, uh, Michelle? 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 I, I... Sorry, Michelle, uh, Michelle's also, uh, doubling as a bouncer today. Um, so again, this is for Council District 4. We'll go over the rules just one more time for folks. Um, every candidate's gonna get 10 minutes, uh, one-on-one time. Um, we're gonna ask them a series of questions. Uh, there might be some similar and some different for this one. Um, but my, uh, my cohort for this one? Michelle? My cohort for this one is, uh, uh, who you all, I know all of you know, is, uh, Michelle D. Winfield, uh, District 4 of the Council. So... Alright, so we're gonna start with our first candidate. I don't know if they can hear me out in the hall? Can they hear me out in the hall? I mean, we need a camera. So, Ben Wetzler is who we're looking at.
Welcome, Ben. Ben Wetzler, after, you know what, from here right now.
So, uh, Ben Wetzler, um, has lived in, uh, multiple different parts of Council District 4 over time, uh, has, uh, worked with his housing department, and, uh, I'll just let him get into the question, because he can probably talk about himself much better than I can. So, actually, housing is our first question.
This means one minute.
Oh, yes. Blue means one minute, yellow means 30 seconds, red means you're done.
Cool.
Um, so, uh, Ben, first question. Uh, would you have voted for the City of Yes? And are there other things you would have included in it? And other steps you would have taken to address the affordable housing crisis in New York City?
Yeah, I mean, the, uh, the most important housing issue that we're facing right now in New York City is that there is just a significant shortage of housing, especially housing that's affordable to people of lower incomes, relative to the need. Uh, to address that, you need a combination of a better and more comprehensive planning process, of which City of Yes was kind of a prototype effort. You need a lot more capital funding, and you need a lot more kind of rental supports, like vouchers and other things like that. And then, most importantly, and this is something that's very important to me, uh, as somebody who's living in rent-stabilized housing now, is you need to make sure that you're actually enforcing, that tenants are able to enforce their rights in housing court, uh, which really means, uh, fully funding the state's, uh, or the city's rent-to-council law. Uh, right now, there is somewhere, you know, thousands of tenants, uh, who are in, uh, housing court right now, who don't have access to an attorney, they can't afford it, and the state, or the city just has not, uh, doesn't have the funding to provide and the staff to provide, uh, everybody with that. And, you know, the law is only as good as your ability to enforce it.
Michelle, you want to ask another question?
Surely. Education. New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
So, that's a very good question. Uh, you know, when you're talking about assignments to schools, you're basically balancing between, uh, the need for parents to be able to have a, a school close by to their house, where they can drop off their kid, where they're not, you know, commuting all the way out into the boroughs, and then coming back, uh, to get to work, against the important need, uh, to make sure that everybody, regardless of what zip code they live in, regardless of what neighborhood they live in, uh, is able to get a quality education. So, uh, I think that, you know, one of the most, we, very recently, uh, the City of, uh, Education Council adopted, uh, a policy to allow, uh, borough-wide preference, instead of, uh, no preference for District High, District 2 high schools. I think that that was a good compromise. It allows people from more diverse neighborhoods around Manhattan to be able to access some of the most in-demand schools in the neighborhood, uh, without, you know, completely pushing kids, uh, to the point where they'd have to commute all the way out to a different borough before school.
Uh, next question is on, uh, uh, street safety specifically regarding e-bikes and scooters, uh, which have created a complicated and sometimes dangerous environment for pedestrians. Uh, what are some steps you would take as a council member, uh, to make things safer for folks crossing the streets?
Yeah, so I, uh, definitely, the, the biggest contributors to, uh, dangerous bicycling, uh, and I really think that it's, you know, the, the traffic problem is just as much about cars as it is about bikes and e-bikes. Uh, I, in the last just few years, I've seen more people blow through red lights than I have in the, you know, 30 years combined, uh, before that. But since the question was specifically about bikes, uh, the, the biggest contributors to dangerous driving are, uh, corporate-owned fleets, like City Bikes, uh, and some of the delivery apps, where they, a, a single company has, uh, multiple, you know, bicyclists, and they collect geodata on all of their operations. Uh, if you use Grubhub or any of those kind of apps, you can typically see the guy who is delivering your food, uh, on an app, and you can see where they're going. And there's absolutely no reason that those companies, uh, should not be required to provide that information, both to an insurance company and to the city, so that they can, the city can confirm whether they're actually obeying the traffic laws, they're not sta, uh, biking on the sidewalk, they're not, uh, speeding, they're not going in the wrong direction. That's something that I absolutely think they should be required to do, uh, and would support legislation in the Council to require them to do that.
This is a criminal justice question. The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Riker Island jails, reducing the jail population approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails, as well as therapeutic housing units and three city hospitals. Would you implement this plan to be a priority? And what structures would you put in place within your administration to make this plan a success? Is there anything you would do to improve on this plan? This was a priority plan.
Uh, short answer is yes. Uh, if the city doesn't close down Rikers, then the federal government is going to. We, we, uh, heard from the Justice Department recently, uh, that they're in talks to put the city into receivership. So, if we don't do something to really get the situation under control and be able to, uh, make sure that we have control over the issue, uh, over, uh, how people are being treated there and the, uh, intake of, uh, how many inmate, reducing the overcrowding problem through controlling how many people are going in, uh, the federal government, we're just going to lose the opportunity to do that in general. So, that requires some large-scale, uh, project, construction project management, which is something that I have a lot of personal experience in, having worked at the State Housing Finance Agency, uh, overseeing a lot of affordable housing projects. That's pretty different from, uh, overseeing the construction of a jail. But in general, the importance of kind of sticking to your timelines and keeping your construction under control is something that the city has not been doing all, the City Council has not been doing a very good job of, uh, specifically in terms of putting oversight on the mayor, uh, but absolutely should be. And if you don't have that, then you're not going to have anywhere for people to go if they shut down the facility, or, you know, a federal judge orders a shutdown, uh, which would be a disaster.
Uh, next question's on climate change. Uh, steps, steps have been taken to mitigate, uh, flooding, uh, in the wake of Superstorm Sandy, which happened over a decade ago, but, uh, uh, many people feel that there's still more steps that can be taken. Uh, what are some specific things that you would introduce to the City Council to, uh, to help mitigate flooding in the district that, much of which was underwater?
Yeah, I, uh, so I live in Stuyvesant Town, uh, right on the corner of 20th and C. I think my building had the most severe flooding during Sandy of any building anywhere in the city. Uh, and it, you know, the flood wall protection that they put in, uh, was not, you know, uh, because it involved coordination between so many different levels of government, it did not, I think, uh, meet all of the needs, uh, of the community, or at least it didn't do so in what could have been the best, uh, you know, much better, uh, much better, uh, had it been managed a lot better. Uh, in terms of what I would do for flood protection, uh, definitely, you know, coordinating between, uh, the different organizations that own property, uh, along the waterfront. We have a lot of big hospitals, uh, in the neighborhood. The Parks Department controls a fair amount of it. The Transportation Department controls the FDR, which is kind of the, you know, the, the biggest single piece of property along, uh, along there. And if you're building those kinds of barriers, that's what you need to be doing. Uh, reducing, you know, there, there are longer-term and bigger-picture, uh, things related to climate change, like reducing, uh, our energy use, uh, shifting over to more, uh, green energy, more efficient fuels, uh, but, you know, that's not going to help you much in the short term. In the short term, what you need to do is, you know, when there's a giant storm, you gotta keep the water out of people's houses, uh, and that requires building, you know, barriers.
Uh, District 4 specific issue, uh, there, there's a site in District 4 on 39th Street, uh, and the river, uh, that is being considered for, uh, one, uh, casino licenses. Uh, number one, would you support that? And number two, if not, what other ideas do you have to develop that specific portion of the plan?
That's an easy one. Uh, no, I would not support, uh, the casino license. Uh, and, you know, we had, uh, Senator Gonzalez organize a big community town hall a few months back, uh, where we heard from the, the owner of that property, who was planning to develop it into the life of, into the casino, they presented, you know, this big fancy, uh, presentation, uh, on all their plan of sport. And it included the kind of token commitment to affordable housing in the same way that most, uh, discretionary construction projects go, that have to go through the city planning process does. Uh, but if you compare that to, you know, what happened during the Great Depression, what we did with vacant, formerly industrial land around New York, it was really a very small-scale and definitely not, uh, community-driven or civically-driven process. It was a developer who was trying to sweeten the deal so that they could get an extremely lucrative, uh, gambling license. And, you know, I would prefer that that be developed as middle-income housing. You know, we have, that is the thing that the city needs much more of. It's something that's absolutely within our purview, uh, in terms of, uh, the city's control over land use and city planning, and that's really what we should have been doing right from the beginning, before they even sold the, you know, it used to be a content site, uh, before they even sold it. That's what they should have been doing.
Alright, one minute. Uh, you're pretty close.
Okay, um, yeah, so, uh, I, hi, everybody. I'm Ben. Didn't really get a chance to introduce myself. You can kind of refer a little bit of what I'm about. But, uh, you know, I am running in this race because I care about this community. I've lived in this neighborhood my entire life. I've been a public servant my entire life, starting, uh, you know, working at the Division of Budget in Albany, after graduating college, going all the way through my current work at the State Housing Department, uh, where I work every single day to make sure that we're, uh, you know, building the kind of communities that we really need here in New York. And, uh, I really hope that I'll have your support.
Alright, that was, uh, Ben Wetzler. That was our first candidate for Council District 4. Up next, we have Luke Florchak. Uh, Luke is a, uh, uh, former, uh, member of the United States Marine Corps, uh, worked on Keith Powers reelection campaign, uh, and is currently a board member of the Illinois Republican Independent Democrats. Luke Florchak. Luke, uh, you're gonna have 10 minutes in total.
Yes.
A litmus will give you, uh, different colors of paper. Blue means one minute.
One minute, 30 seconds.
Bingo. Yeah. And your first question is on housing. Um, uh, if you were in the Council, uh, this year, would you have supported, uh, the City of Yes? Um, are there steps that were left out of that that you would have taken differently? And what other things you, would you do to address the affordable housing crisis in New York City?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I guess I don't need this. To start off with, yes, I would have supported, uh, City of Yes. It goes part of the way to, to improving, uh, affordable housing, uh, in the need that we need supply. Uh, you know, supply and demand helps with, uh, you know, simple economics of, if we have more of something, generally speaking, there's, it's gonna be less expensive. Now, uh, of course, that's not the only way to go about things. Uh, one of the ways to go about things is to, um, actually attack, why are things so expensive? You know, $1.2 million for the average, uh, two-bedroom apartment owning in Manhattan? That's... There's, there's way too many adjectives to describe what that is, uh, some of which would have been kosher in the Marine Corps. But, part of the solution is, uh, you know, uh, when it comes to housing development and zoning and land use, being able to look at things in the future, uh, recognizing that communities need more housing, better housing, uh, more affordable housing, and to stick with, uh, the percentages of, you know, X amount of units in a building must be affordable. Uh, on top of that, I would go as far as to say, a portion of that should go to, uh, first come, first served for veterans. Uh, that's just my, uh, you know, the things that I'm supportive of. But, uh, those should still be in that affordable bracket. One of the other things, too, is to change the definition of what affordable housing means. Um, you know, lower that cap, um, to what actually is, you know, the most common denominator. I'm, I'm trying my best. I still can't get anywhere. Where is that number? Figure that out, and, you know, we might have a heading in the right direction.
Michelle?
Topic is education. New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
Segregation specific. Well, for one, I think reforming the SHSAT, um, is a big step in the right direction for that. I think, um, standardized testing shouldn't go away, but I, I think it shouldn't be what it is today in terms of being the only thing that marks where somebody is going to school. The best effort to be put is to be put on where, uh, or is to make all schools around all of New York City as, as best as they can be. You know, put the effort into that, not just focusing on one or two schools that it's, these are the best schools, the best, uh, test takers are gonna be going here. Uh, 'cause that's not fair, that's not fair for anybody. Uh, you know, all schools, all public schools should be palaces. I believe that to the, my core. So, investing in all neighborhoods and being able to make all schools, uh, successful. Uh, I think that would, one, help build community, and I think that would help also build, uh, strengthening public education.
Next question is on street safety specifically regarding e-bikes and scooters, which have created a, uh, complicated and sometimes dangerous environment for pedestrians. A City Council member, what steps did you take to make things easier for folks to cross the street?
So, um, in the next couple of weeks, I'm announcing a 15-point plan, uh, as part of my quote-unquote "first 100 days in office." Uh, these are things that I would like to focus on first, but not necessarily the only things that I'm focusing on. One of these things is specifically about e-bikes. One of the solutions to this, uh, at very broad, and I'm sure we all know, crossing a crosswalk is dangerous. Uh, to provide lighting across crosswalks at night is one of the common sense solutions that, you know, I don't, I don't know why no one's thought of lighting crosswalks at night. The other thing is to be able to track bike, uh, bicycles. If they are actually breaking the law, how do we find them? You know, I've spent plenty of hours over the campaign talking with NYPD, uh, police officers in hypothetical situations. You know, if a, if a e-bike ran through the red light right now, where we're standing in a street corner, and hit somebody and kept going, what do you, what can you do about it? And every single time, the answer is nothing. Uh, I can't do anything about this. One of my solutions is to amend the bill that's already in place to register batteries, uh, with implementing, uh, kind of IR, uh, infrared, uh, reflectors. Put them on the batteries that have to be registered in the first place, which, uh, already active CCTV cameras can capture who and what is going where. Uh, and thanks to the bill by, uh, Al Torres, we now have bicycle accidents being recorded and, uh, data being, uh, collected about bicycles. Now we just have to go there one step further on whose bicycle went.
Michelle?
Criminal justice. The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Riker Island jails, reducing the jail population to approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails, as well as therapeutic housing units and three city hospitals. Would you implement this plan as a priority? And what structures would you put in place to make this plan a success? And is there anything that you would do to improve on this plan?
I don't think Rikers should close, for one. But I do believe that, uh, the way that prisoners are treated there has to be changed and corrected. No matter what somebody has done, they're still a human being, uh, they deserve to be treated with respect. On the subject of opening the in-borough, uh, facilities, I'm tentatively on, on board with that, as long as there's proper policing in the, in the vicinity. I know that would probably be the largest concern for most people. One of the things that I'm trying to do in my campaign is to, uh, have a campaign and potentially an Office of Transparency and Communication. One of those things is communication on what each police precinct is doing month to month. Uh, there are already, as I'm sure some of you know, monthly Build-A-Block meetings per precinct. These can be attended more, or if I think it should be the responsibility of somebody in office to relay the information that's already out there, that's already public, through the platform of the New York City Council, uh, in, you know, your local office. What is precinct 13, 15, 17 doing this month? What has been, uh, happening? What's being doing, what's being done about X, Y, and Z? I think if we had a system of better communication with, uh, each department, uh, and with the City Council, me or whoever you, uh, wish to support, being there, I, I don't foresee a, an issue being, uh, having a facility like that.
Uh, so just, just point a clarification, so you believe Rikers should stay open, but you also are in favor of the motivation as?
Uh, the psychiatric facilities, I would say, more so than the actual jails.
Okay. Um, you have a minute left, please feel free to, uh, give a closing statement.
Um, as was briefly mentioned, uh, I was in the Marine Corps for eight years. My main reason for running is, um, it was told to me, uh, earlier last year, that for at least the last decade, there's not been a single veteran in the New York City Council's office in any of the 51 seats, uh, despite there being upwards of almost a quarter of a million veterans. One of the issues with that is that it's, um, not right. And for some reason, I find myself being the only veteran in all of New York City willing to stand up and actually run for anything, um, which has been my driving force to run. So for me, it's not a choice to run or, or anything like that, but an obligation. And, uh, I'd like to thank you for your time and listening to me. I have about 13 seconds.
Two.
Two, one. There you go.
All right, moving right along, our next candidate is Rachel Storch. Rachel, uh, is a resident of the Upper East Side, uh, has actually served in office before, uh, was a elected official, experienced jury, uh, and has lived in the Upper East Side since 2010. Uh, Rachel, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, first question is on housing, uh, specifically regarding the City of Yes. Uh, oh, yeah, sorry. That's, blue is one minute, yellow is 30 seconds, pink is...
Done.
Um, City of Yes, would you have supported it if you were in the Council right now? Do you think it goes far enough? And are there other things that you would do to address the affordable housing crisis?
Sure. Um, well, I was thrilled to see City of Yes pass. I thought this was historic legislation, probably some of the most important housing legislation New York City has ever had, um, certainly since 1961. Uh, but it is just a step in the right direction, um, an important step, but just the first step. Um, we need thousands and thousands more units, not just 4,000 a year, but I did think it opened the door, um, for reform. Uh, we need to continue doing more to convert the, um, unused and underutilized office space into residential. Um, in many places, we can go taller, um, but this is getting at the, one of the number one crises that we're experiencing in New York City today around affordability and, and the housing crisis, and I, I was thrilled to see City of Yes pass.
Michelle?
Uh, because education. New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
Thank you. Um, it tortures me that we have this kind of segregation in city schools. We cannot do enough to fix this problem, and we need to start with our youngest kids to make sure that, um, it, we are filling those pre-K and 3K spots, um, so that those kids are ready to go on to kindergarten. Intervention needs to start at the youngest ages. Then, in our elementary schools, we need to make sure that there are gifted programs for Black and Latino kids, so that they have the same kind of opportunities to get into the specialized high schools like Stigson and Hunter. And then, we need to make sure that those families have access to the same kind of test prep that wealthy families have, so that they have a fair shot in those application processes.
Excellent. Uh, next question is regarding street safety specifically with the e-bikes and scooters, uh, which created a complicated and sometimes dangerous environment for pedestrians. Uh, what are some steps you would take as a council member, uh, to make it safer for folks who cross the street?
Sure. I hear about this all the time, and as a mother of four kids, age 10, 11, 12, and 13, including a few that are somewhat petite, um, it's something top of mind for me, and it actually stops me from allowing my kids to be as independent as they want to be and as I would like them to be, simply because I'm concerned about crossing the streets, even at the end of our clock. Um, this is something that absolutely needs attention. I thought Governor Hochul's proposal to reclassify the heaviest e-bikes as mopeds, thus subjecting them to licensure and registration, was a very good proposal. Um, but we need to do more of that, because, um, you know, these riders are going down the streets, have very, very high speeds, they are not necessarily respecting traffic regulations, and then personally, I think we need to call on the delivery companies, um, to do more and to take some responsibility and have some accountability here, because essentially what's happening is that they are hiring drivers, not giving them training, not giving them equipment, but dinging them when they're late. And so there is a disincentive built into the system for those drivers to be safe. And we all know, New Yorkers want their food, and those drivers are trying to do their job and get the food to the places they need to as fast as they can, but at the end of the day, a lot, many, too many accidents are happening, and, and I think we need to call on those companies to, to do more.
Michelle?
This is criminal justice.
Yes.
The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Riker Island jails, reducing the jail population approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails, as well as therapeutic housing units and three city hospitals. Would you implement this plan as a priority? And what structures would you put in place to make this plan a success? And is there anything you would do to improve that?
Okay, um, so, look, Rikers is a disaster, and I think we all can see, uh, every time we open the door, the horrific abuses that are going on there. In addition, a federal judge just held the city in contempt for failure to make the improvements that it was supposed to be making at Rikers. It has to close. Um, I do think there will need to be some adjustments to the plan. It is, I, I don't think it's likely that they can do it by 2027, but we need to have all the key stakeholders at the table, um, so that we can get that job done in a, in a safe way.
Uh, next question is something that was, uh, a few folks have brought up, that's specific to your campaign. Um, you know, public financing campaigns empower to people and not special interests. Uh, every other person in this race has chosen to take, uh, public financing. Could you tell us why you decided not to take public financing?
Sure, absolutely. So, New York has a very special system, and I do support the system. Um, public financing has been really important in leveling the playing field to allow people to run for office, um, who might not have access to a network or resources. This matters. As somebody who's done a lot of candidate recruitment in my time, I can tell you especially that women and candidates of color are particularly, um, likely to encounter systemic barriers to being able to run for office and get the resources they need. Um, in my own race, I, and I can tell you why I make the decision, make the decision. I'm in a competitive race. Everyone brings different strengths to the table. Um, there's one candidate who has run before and has the ability to spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars telling the district about herself. There's another candidate who has a lot of name recognition, um, a very, very well-respected name, justifiably up and down the East Side. I'm fortunate to have a broad network of... I'm fortunate to have a broad network of supporters who are aligned with the vision that I have for New York City around public safety, addressing mental health and homelessness, fighting anti-Semitism, and want to see me succeed and have come forward to support my campaign. I'm proud to have now more than 650 supporters, and I am out there every day working hard to garner and earn their support.
So, I just want to push back one second.
Yeah, of course.
So you say you're a supporter of public financing, but have taken the highest average donation of any of the candidates in this race by, I believe, threefold, with many contributions coming from outside of the state. So how do you rectify that with your support of the system?
Sure. Look, I was a legislator in Missouri, and I had a successful career there. I left because I had been born in New York, but I fell in love with a New Yorker, and I moved back here 15 years ago. But I moved in the middle of my career, and I still have a big network of people there who supported the work I do. They knew I had a track record. I was successful as a legislator, I'm proud to say. And so I did do an event in September in St. Louis. I was proud to have a congressman there introduce me. I'm proud of my track record there, and I'm proud of my support there. But I think if you look at my most recent quarter, where I did not do an event in St. Louis, you'll see that that money is coming from New York. There is a small amount of money that has come from prior New Yorkers who have left New York and moved to places like Connecticut and New York, and it is certainly fully my intent, if elected to city council, to go and get every single one of those people back and make New York City the kind of place they want to stay in and come back to.
So, a quick question. One of the proposed casino sites is at the District 39 Street. Is that something you would support? And if not, what other ideas would you have for that specific parcel of area?
Look, I'm a little skeptical of casinos in Manhattan. We certainly don't need it to draw tourists. We're a spectacular tourist site, and I think casinos come along with a lot of problems. So I would need to be convinced. In terms of that particular site, that's a new question for me. I don't have a specific answer for you tonight, but I, you know, we'll take a look.
Okay.
Certainly more housing, I think, is our biggest need right now for the city as a whole, and that would be my number one immediate go-to.
Okay, so you have about a minute left, so I'll give you a chance to give a closing tip.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to use 10 seconds of that time to just thank you so much. I know the kind of work that is entailed in the club of work, to register voters, to educate them on issues, and that is year-round work, and it's hard, and it's your time and energy, and I thank you. As for myself, I am a mother of four, and I'm running to keep this city as great for my kids and your family, as it has always been, as it was when my kids' great-great-grandparents came here five generations ago to make a better life. There's so much we can do to address public safety, to keep families safe on the streets and the subways, to address these epidemics of mental health and homelessness. I am a former legal aid attorney. I am a former state legislator. I'm deputy chief of staff in the United States Senate. These are problems with fixes, and it's time to get them done, and I can hit the ground running to do that for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Michelle? All right, moving right along, we have our next candidate for District 4, that's Vanessa Aronson. Vanessa was up until recently president of our neighborhood club in the 73rd, the Lexington Democratic Club. She has previously run for this seat eight years ago and is running again for it now as an open seat. She currently works for the ASPCA and has previously been a public school teacher and a foreign service officer. Vanessa Aronson, thank you so much for joining us. So let's jump right into the questions. You're going to have 10 minutes in total for everything. Elizabeth over here is going to give you some guidelines. The blue is one minute, the yellow is 30 seconds, and the red is you're done. First question, housing, specifically regarding the City of Yes. Are you a supporter of the plan as it is? Would you have voted for it if you were in the council now? And what other steps would you take to address the affordable housing crisis that might have been left out of the City of Yes?
Okay, perfect. I love the question. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's really cold, but cozy in here, and I'm so grateful to see everybody here. I'm Vanessa Aronson. I think we all can agree, there is a housing crisis, there is an affordability crisis. I know I spent a lot of time thinking about these issues. I was a member of Community Board Eight. I was appointed by our current council member, Keith Powers, in 2018. And I know I spent lots of late hours participating in the ULEAP process, thinking about projects from every different angle, right? Really thinking about how we can make more affordability. And I think there are multiple strategies that the city can use to increase housing and affordability in New York City. So the first strategy that I believe is really important is protecting every single affordable unit that we have. So reports have shown that we have lost 150,000 affordable units in recent years, and the estimate is that 75% of that was just since 2019. We're losing it through deregulation, oftentimes illegal deregulation. So I think the absolute first step needs to be protect the affordable housing stock that we currently have. The second piece that I think is really important is that we have to ensure and keep HPD, that's Housing Preservation and Development, and the Department of Buildings accountable to deliver on the affordable housing that they promised. So what we're seeing is multiple instances of housing that, well, of projects that are being developed with permitted increased FAR as part of mandatory inclusionary housing that are never delivering on the affordability that they promised. And we're seeing that more often when the affordable housing was permitted to be off-site. So I'm hopeful that the universal affordability preference, UAP, which is the affordability part of the City of Yes, will help mitigate some of that. But I think it's going to be really, really important that we hold, that Department of Buildings and HPD hold that accountable. Third, commercial conversions. This is also part of City of Yes. So right now, Midtown, 20% vacancies and office vacancies. And if we were to just increase density only in parts of the city, or in parts of Midtown that already allow for residential towers, we could build right now 85,000 units. So I think that's going to be a key to increasing affordability. What else? Seniors aging in place is going to be really crucially important, so ensuring that they have access to assistant, rental assistance, that they have ability to make accessibility upgrades, ensuring that they have access and understand their right to counsel, and that that bill is actually fully funded so people can stay protected, and ensuring that we build vibrant communities for them where they can age in place in the communities that they built and sustained. So, well, and then lastly, so City of Yes is absolutely a great step forward, but it's only predicted to yield 5,000 units per year, and we know that that's not enough. And also what we're seeing is that what's happening in my community, right across the street from me, is that we're seeing tenants that have affordable housing being torn down so that towers can be built in their place. But because of the way that the towers are constructed, because of the enormous, what am I trying to say? Floor, what is it? Floor height? What we're seeing is that even when they participate in mandatory inclusionary housing, it's resulting in a net decrease of affordable housing. So I think what's going to be really incumbent upon the city council member and when I get into city council is to ensure that projects that come into our community, especially those that are seeking variances, especially those that are seeking, you know, any type of, you know, participating in UAP, that they are actually delivering a net increase in housing. And I think that that will be absolutely key.
So we appreciate the depth of your answer, but I'm just keeping my attendance at all, so just maybe, you know, get some final...
You don't have a colored paper for how?
Michelle has the next question. Thank you.
An important issue. I care a lot about it.
Criminal justice. The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Rikers Island jails, reducing the jail population to approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails, as well as therapeutic housing units in three city hospitals. Would implementing this plan be a priority, and what structures would you put in place within to make this plan a success? And is there anything that you would do to improve that plan?
All right. Look, this is an issue I think we've all been following for a long time. I am a proponent of closing Rikers. I think it's really important that we understand what Rikers has become, and that we understand that while those are awaiting trial, that they are not put into a place where there, we know that there's psychological issues that have happened, as have all the Rikers. So to me, it's a balance of how we keep our community safe while also ensuring that these people have the right to a fair trial, to a timely trial. So I think one of the key issues here is ensuring that those who are awaiting trial are, you know, come to trial in a timely manner. So I think that that's absolutely important and one of the steps to making sure that we're not, unfortunately, we're housing people while they are awaiting, you know, what they are due process, what they are legally entitled to. I do think that communities, you know, all around the city need to understand what this means, and that we need to find better solutions for public safety generally. And I'm so sorry, I can't remember what the rest of the question was.
No, it's okay. We can move on.
Okay, sorry about that.
So, next question's on e-bikes and scooters, which have created sometimes dangerous environments for pedestrians. What are some steps you would take as a city council member to make it easier to cross the street?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a concern I'm hearing from a lot of people about safety concerns from e-bikes, scooters, whether it's reckless driving in bike lanes or careless driving in bike lanes, mopeds on sidewalks. As a mom, I am pushing a baby in a stroller, holding my four-year-old on the hand, I know that it's really scary to cross the street. There has been progress to be made. I don't know if everyone's, you know, it's just been first of the year, but our assembly member, or my assembly member, I'm uptown a little bit, Alex Boris, carried a bill that was just signed into law by the governor, that mandates that mopeds and e-scooters are registered at point of sale in New York State, which is a huge win for mitigating the safety concerns of unlicensed vehicles on pedestrians. So I'm really proud about that, but there is work to be done. And we absolutely need to hold the delivery companies accountable for imposing unsafe, unfair working conditions that cause delivery drivers to, you know, it's impossible for them to meet the time targets and follow safety laws. So I absolutely think we need to hold our delivery companies accountable for hiding behind their workers and putting us in unsafe conditions.
Yeah. You want me to...
Education, education. New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
30 seconds.
30-second answer. Oh, my goodness. Okay. We need amazing neighborhood schools. I'm particular, I'm a former teacher. I'm an advocate for students with special needs, was something I did as a teacher. I'm a former UFT member, a member of the teachers' union. And personally, the biggest disparity, I think, in schools, and it's not by location, but it's the services for students with special needs. There are hundreds of thousands of students in New York City right now, all across the city, every single district, in the school that's next to your house, that are not getting the services that they are entitled to by federal law, and that's because the city has not demanded the funding from the state that they are entitled to. So there's a lot of disparities in education, but that was under 30 seconds.
Yeah.
But that's my first priority.
About 45 seconds to close.
45 seconds to close. Thank you so much. I'm so grateful to be here. I'm running for office because I care deeply about public service, my commitment to the community, whether it be in the Democratic Clubs, the Community Board, but also my career in public service. I was a foreign service officer. I know how to navigate bureaucracy. I've delivered on results. As I mentioned, I became a New York City public school teacher and delivered for my students, and I now have the privilege of working for the ASPCA, the senior director of strategy, where I've, you know, delivered for animals nationwide. But thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it.
Time goes by when you're having fun. All right, two more candidates to go. Our next candidate is Faith Bondi. Faith is currently the president of the St. Louis Democratic Club, also is a respected litigator, who's received many awards for her work. Please welcome Faith. Come on in. So Faith, you're going to have 10 minutes in total for the entire time. Elizabeth over here is going to give you blue for one minute, yellow for 30 seconds, and pink for when you're done.
Now I have to remember all that.
First question's on housing, specifically regarding the City of Yes. Would you have supported the City of Yes in its current form? If not, what would you have changed? And what other steps would you take to address the affordable housing crisis in New York City?
So first of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on this really cold and snowy night. So our city needs more housing. We are in a housing crisis. We don't have enough housing for people who are here, for the productive number of people who are coming, and we need more affordable housing for people in every place going across the board, and to make sure that we have, people can age in place. And so City of Yes was the start of that. I think the city council did a good job at making sure that they listened to the community and made tweaks where people were upset with it, and it's a start. It's not the end, but it's a start. And so, and the current plan with the modifications, with the doubles in retail, would have looked a bit...
Michelle?
Education. New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
So, as a public school parent who has two children who have been in the public schools since the start, who has served on multiple PTAs, including as a PTA president, on the school leadership team, I've been rarely entrenched in our public schools and understand the issues that our schools face, and administrators, our parents, and our teachers. So I really understand the educational issues. And this is really an issue more of housing than anything. We need to build more housing in more communities and more affordable throughout our city so that more kids have access to all different schools.
Okay, next question is on street safety, specifically regarding e-bikes and scooters, which have created a sometimes dangerous and complicated situation for pedestrians. As council member, what steps would you take to make it easier for folks to cross the street?
Thank you. It's an issue that comes up across our entire district. It's an issue of great concern. And while we want to encourage people to ride bicycles and use alternative means of transportation, we want to make sure people are doing that responsibly, and if people get hurt, that they have recourse for that. And we've seen time and time again that people are riding on our streets. And so I've been proud to see that there's some bills passed in the state legislature, that there are bills pending in the council right now to ban e-bikes in our parks, to require registration and licensing so that people who are injured, my husband and I were walking, and one of our daughter's friends was hit by an e-scooter, and one had shattered and her life. And there's no recourse, and people are left disabled, unable to work. And so we need to make sure that people are protected walking our streets, and then if they get hurt, just like you do in a car, that there's recourse.
Michelle?
Criminal justice. The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Rikers Island jails, reducing the jail population to approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails, as well as therapeutic housing units in three city hospitals. Would implementing this plan be a priority, and what structures would you put in place within to make this plan a success? And is there anything you could do to improve this plan?
So, violence in our jails is unacceptable, whether it's inmate on inmate, inmate on guard, and we need to make sure we address it. Rikers Island is going to be closed. It's going to be closed, whether it's closed by our city or by the federal government. And so we need to make sure we have a robust plan to address that issue. I am concerned about building community jails in communities that don't want community jails, and so we need to work with the stakeholders in those communities to make sure that we have a plan that addresses their concerns. Therapeutic beds is really important. We have a lot of people that are in our correction system that have serious mental health...
health issues, and they're not getting the services that they need, particularly in our short-term facilities, which are jails. And we need to make sure that they do, or else they're going to be let out on the street and create engagement of additional crimes. So we need to actually increase that part of our plan.
A good portion of District Four was underwater from Sandy, and some steps have been taken to mitigate that from happening in the future. Do you think it's going to turn off? And if not, what other steps would you take to make sure that we mitigate flood protection from what will likely be much more powerful storms in the future?
So, an important question. Climate change is here, as we see every single day or every season, and we need to be sure that we address it. And for those of us who take the subway on a regular basis, we, I think the answer, we haven't done enough because of any big storm, we're walking through puddles, we're walking through rainstorms within the subway. So we need to do more to ensure that our sewer systems are upgraded, we started programs with redundancies and new sewers, we need to make sure we have more natural catch basins, and really continue to improve on the work that we started. But we need to take another next step with more infrastructure programs. The resiliency on the water was one step, the storm doors on the subways is the next step. We need to keep going.
There's a proposal for Casino over on Thirty-Ninth and the River where the condo plan used to be. Do you support that proposal? And if not, what other potential uses would you envision for that land?
So, I mean, this is a plan that's probably going to be improved by the current council member, but I know it's an issue of importance to the community. And for me, the community is the most important, if anyone. I've been working in the community for years, doing the work, working with neighbor associations, PTA's, the parks associations, and so listening to the needs of the community is really important. So for me, the issue becomes sitting down with all the stakeholders, understanding what their concerns are. Is there a way to bridge those concerns? And if not, then at the end of the day, I stand with the community and I protect the community. That's always my priority.
Appreciate your second answers. It's allowing us to get some more questions. And this is why we have a nice chance to ask it of any of the four candidates, but tell us about the plan for small businesses.
So small businesses are the likelihood of our city, and a lot of them have been pushed out of our city between high rents, traffic, lack of traffic, pandemic, lack of visitors to the city. I'm glad to see that more and more are returning to our city. So we need to work with them to understand what the problems are, whether it's taxes, whether it's a lot of times it was the issue of city bureaucracy, and understand how we as a city can serve them better. And that's my.
Excellent. A couple rapid-fire questions, then I will go to you if you want me to close. Should police reform include reducing the overall police budget?
No.
Do you support increasing the cap for street members?
Yes.
Should the city increase taxes on high-income earners to fund social services?
Yes.
Do you support expanding New York City's badly flawed governmental workers?
Yes.
And would you support a stronger implementation of Local Law Ninety-Seven than this current mayor has? What do you think?
That's a really complicated question, and we give a lot of buildings, it's on a replicate answer. So a lot of buildings in our district that are impacted by it. The implementation of Local Law Ninety-Seven has caused a lot of buildings to incur a lot of expenses, and so we really need to figure out how to reduce carbon emissions and also not cause shareholders, building owners, to be overextended in terms of cost to the point where it's not possible to implement. Also, there are issues with whether we can actually implement changes.
Okay, one minute to close.
So thank you, everybody, for coming. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Faith Bondi. I'm the president of Tilden, and I'm also a member of ERID. And this community is my home. It's my family's home. I'm raising my two girls here. And I've been committed, and I am committed, to improving the quality of life here. I've been doing it for decades. I've worked in our parks, I've worked in our schools, I've worked in our neighborhoods for safety, for people who are in need. And that's why I've been able to put together a coalition of community leaders and advocates who understand my commitment, my desire to ensure that we have the quality of life that we deserve and we expect, and that we have a leader who has common sense, practical experience who can get us that. And so that's why they endorse me, and so I ask you to endorse me as well. So thank you.
Okay, our final candidate for District Four, our final candidate of the evening is Virginia Maloney. Virginia is a born and raised resident of Upper East Side, has worked in both the local and federal government with the Economic Development Corporation, and working on high-speed rail nationally. And please welcome Virginia Maloney. So Virginia, you're going to have ten minutes in total. Elizabeth over here is going to give you some benchmarks. Blue is one minute, yellow is thirty seconds, and pink is ten seconds.
Okay.
So your first question is on affordable housing, specifically regarding the City of Yes. Are you supportive of the plan in its current form? Are there any other additional steps you would take to to increase affordable housing in New York City?
All right, thank you. And thank you all for having me here. It's great to see so many people in the audience, and thank you, Mike. So yes, I am supportive of City of Yes. I think that 80,000 housing units for a city of 8 million is not enough, and we need to be pushing pushing that type of innovation and reforms forward. So in city council, I would look to further update outdated zoning laws, and I would want to look at city properties in particular that could be redeveloped, continue efforts to convert commercial space into residential where it makes sense. So yes, supportive of City of Yes, but there is a lot more work to be done to increase affordable housing in a city where the median rent is 4,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. And I know I'm supposed to keep it brief.
Oh, you're good. Michelle has the next one.
Education.
All right.
New York City's school system is widely known as the most segregated school system in the country, contributing to disparities in educational outcomes. What steps would you take to address this issue?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I support choice for parents to be able to choose which school is their children are going to, including charter schools, if that's the direction that they would want to go in. And we also have to invest a lot more in funding for for our teachers and our schools to address equity gaps in education.
You can extend upon that if you'd like.
Okay, I was just told.
No, no, please, no, please, right.
So, yeah, I think that it's a very challenging issue in the city, but we're lucky that we have the tools to make sure that all students are getting the resources and investments that they need. Yeah.
Okay, next question is regarding street safety, specifically e-bikes and scooters, which have created a complicated and sometimes dangerous environment for pedestrians. What are some steps you would take as council member to make sure that it's easier for folks to cross the street?
Yeah, it's the Wild West out there, and we need to be taking a lot more steps on on street safety. So investing in infrastructure is part of what we what we need to be doing, encouraging enforcement, so looking at registration of mopeds and e-bikes. It's one of the ways to ensure that we keep bikes literally in their lane and not on streets. Also, daylighting, so making sure that you have more visibility and safety protections in the infrastructure to keep pedestrians safe. It's a very common issue on the East Side, and I think something that city council needs to take seriously. With the rise of delivery services, it's even more prevalent in recent years, and it's a trend that we need to be tracking. On the data side, the rise in e-bikes and also where accidents are happening in the city.
Michelle.
Criminal justice. The existing plan to close Rikers Island involves closing the Rikers Island jails, reducing the jail population to approximately 4,200 people in custody, and establishing four borough-based jails as well as therapeutic housing units in three city hospitals. Would you implement this plan as a priority? And what structures would you put in place to make this plan a success? And is there anything you would improve on this plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Rikers Island has been a challenge for years, and it's clear that there is a need for further investment in, you know, that that is not going to be a continued option in the future. The plan that's been forward put forward, there is not a prison in District Four, so I work with my counterparts in city council to hear the concerns of their constituencies and make sure that we're also taking care of the the people who are still in custody while this transition is happening. I think the fact that we're even in this situation speaks to the importance of government accountability, which is one of the tenants of my campaign. And we should have been addressing these challenges a lot earlier before we're faced with having to to close Rikers Island.
Next question is regarding climate change and the environment, specifically with the fact that most of District Four was flooded in some way, shape, or form after Hurricane Sandy. Some steps have been taken to mitigate that. Do you feel that we should go further than that? And what other things would you recommend as a council member for climate change?
Yeah, it's, climate change is a huge challenge. We're seeing that in L.A. right now with fires. We've seen that in New York with Sandy. I was a city employee when Hurricane Sandy hit and saw firsthand seniors who were unable to leave their apartments because elevators weren't working, phones not working, and the subway system not functioning. So I think we do need to do a lot more to invest in coastal resiliency, hardening our coastlines, and also infrastructure again, so transit and building building resiliency in our subway systems. And I'd also add in real estate, moving key infrastructure from the basement to the middle of the building to ensure that you're preparing for those types of disasters that will inevitably come in our future, preventing protecting people and also building a more resilient economy and allowing our city to keep functioning when these climate change disasters inevitably strike.
That's something that was specific to your campaign regarding a mention on your website that the New York City budget is wasteful. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Go with the specific terms about what you think we need to cut or reinvest elsewhere?
Sure. So we have a $110 billion city budget, and the big role of city council is determining where that money is allocated. I think we need to be vigilant and hold government accountable for where that money is spent, and also be transparent on on how things are working. I'd say we need to focus on results, not milestones. So programs where you you may have several city agencies that have the same stated goal and are receiving funds, consolidating those, so that we aren't funding several mayoral, separate mayoral initiatives, but putting them in one organization and focusing on database investments. Shipping up a program without serving any constituents is not a success. It's about actually delivering the results of what the program sets out to achieve. And that's one of the four things that I would want to focus on in city council.
One of the potential landing spots for Casino is in the District of Thirty-Ninth and the River. Is that something you would support? And if not, what other ideas do you have for that proposal?
Yeah, I think that housing and affordability is a critical thing for the city to be investing in rather than than casino and gaming, and would want to look at alternatives for the use of that land.
So not not families? Small businesses. Tell us about your plan for small businesses.
Small businesses are struggling in the recent economy, and we need to be doing more to protect them. I think that small businesses make up the fabric of of New York, the mom-and-pop shops, and more and more we're seeing this replaced by withdrawing recruits and more non-local. So I think efforts like support small businesses and making sure that we are supporting our local local mom-and-pop shops. The other thing I'd say is back to government accountability and making making it easier for people to interface with government. You know how difficult it is to get things done when you're a small business and work with government and streamlining those services, making it easier to run a business in New York City so that more businesses are choosing to to found here and stay here. And was that?
One minute to close.
Oh, okay. So I'm Virginia. I'm a native New Yorker. I've grown up in this city. I love this city, and I want to make it safer and more affordable. I've worked for the city with Mayor Bloomberg to expand free public Wi-Fi, and I've worked in the private sector to make tech more accessible. And I have tenacity and resilience to deliver real results, and I'm excited to do that for the community I grew up in. My my platform is focused on accountability, affordability, and accessibility. We've talked about accountability. Affordability means more housing, and accessibility means a city government that is working for everyone, not just some. So please visit my website, virginiamaloney.com, for more information. There's an issues page where you can go into a lot more detail than than this rapid-fire. And I'm also going to be hanging around if anybody wants to to chat a bit longer. How do I do?